Here.
John?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Nate, Eric, Travis?
Here.
Okay. Uh, first items, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Concerned agenda, any additions, corrections? We need to, um...
Take off F5.
Okay. Just post or table that till next week probably, the next meeting. Anything else? Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Steph?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Public input, this is time for anybody that wishes to talk to the council and it's not on the agenda, just come forward and talk. Okay, go ahead ma'am.
Oh, okay.
You can come up.
And I don't know if this is the time. I have some questions about zoning classification of the land, number one on the project information.
Why don't you come up the mic here and, uh...
Novak's states?
Yes.
Then, we're gonna, we'll deal with it later.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Anything else? Okay, moving on. Approval of pay estimate number one and change order number one to Eastern Iron evacuation.
Excavating.
And Concrete LLC for White East Paving Lot improvements in the amount of forty-three thousand, uh, eleven dollars and forty-nine cents.
So that's, that's completely done, right Travis?
Uh, minus the seating and they're talking tomorrow and Wednesday to finish the seating.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second. Travis?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of pay estimate number one and change order number one to Eastern Isle evac- what is it? Evacuation?
Excavating.
Excavating.
Excavating. LLC for Alley Drainage and Main Street improvements in the amount of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Okay, approval of pay estimate number eight, Municipal Pipe Tooling Company for sanitary sewer rehabilitation in the amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars, ninety-six cents.
So are they all done Travis?
No.
Is this really so, are they gonna have another pay estimate?
Yeah, Dave just takes us from what we've had done already, right? For, yeah.
Do we know how much is left?
Yeah, we have just a couple lines left and it's over by the school. But with it raining all the time, they couldn't get in there. And now it's gonna be a matter of the school kinda push some dirt where they shouldn't have, so we're gonna get that moved and, and they should be able to get in there.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, Travis?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Request from Southeast Lynn to discussion on storm drain issue in the back alley. Is that you Michael?
Yes.
Okay.
So, one of the last storm, winter storms we've had, we've got flooding through, in through the whole area, the main, the main room. Um, and, um, lost some tile, et cetera. We've kind of temporarily put it all back together again, minus the few that we couldn't match. But, the problem still exists and there are, so, um, months ago now, I had, I requested that Travis looked at it, we looked at it. Uh, we're trying to get the city engineer to, was in the area to, you know, with the Novak addition, to give us recommendations, city building. I don't like Williams making the decisions on how we're gonna keep it from flooding. But, and that hasn't happened. We would like to move on before we have some problems, additional problems. It appears to me, a layman, that, um, the alley, the crest of the alley is considerably higher than the foundation of our building. And that can be excavated away. The, the drain gutter, roof gutter drain was, was put in new last fall. But drains to the front of the building when there's actually a storm sewer in the back of the building. My thought is, is that it should be draining to that storm sewer to keep it away because where everything came, it came around the corner of the building, down the sidewalk. There's a two-tiered sidewalk between the curb and the sidewalk now, so the curb is higher, whether that needs to be ground or not, but it's not flowing out into the street. So, we, we are to know what the city wants, what the city will do, um, on this. Where to stop.
Did you guys look at it Travis?
Yeah, we looked at it. We looked at it a while ago, Dave and I went over there. The way the water flows, um, it's meant to go to the east off of the, the gutters from, like Bill's in the salon. And when I saw that this was on the agenda, we had a rainstorm and I went over and videotaped it. It does everything from the back, runs down to the east like it's supposed to, and then runs over. The backside of the building was dry. Now, as far as the front side, I did not go and look at it because I didn't realize that that's the issue. When Mike and I talked, it was all with the rock in the back and the grading there. The, the way, the way the grading is in the back and the way the water was running after the last rainstorm, I know Connie's been over for a certain rainstorm and she saw the same thing. I think Doug's been over there and saw the same thing in the back. As far as the front goes, I can look at that, the way the gutter is, but there's a storm drain up, just up and down the street and the water's supposed to flow that way. I think it's gonna be kinda hard to get the water to run from the southwest corner of the building back and then into where the storm drain is that way. It's always been designed to go...
The only way you'd be able to do that is, because your drain probably comes, your ease probably comes like that. I mean, if you tilt them towards that way, that's only when, put your drain out back there. I mean, that's only when that's gonna flow that way.
But you're still taking the chance if there is a foundation crack or somewhere there. I mean, you're taking all that extra water that should be going to the street this way and forcing it to come back and run alongside the building.
No, I'm saying put the drain down on behind, on the backside.
Switch the gutter.
Oh, switch the way it comes off, yeah, you could do that.
I mean, because that's, that's where it seems, that's where it seems the problem is, it isn't getting to Washington Street.
Well, it's not getting to Washington Street. We had, we had a monumental winter.
Yeah.
We probably had twelve to fourteen inches of ice buildup in that, in that alley area.
Yeah.
But even in ideal conditions, because of the sidewalk not being, you know, there's being a resistance there with curb, we're just, it, it dumps to a hole. I always thought it dumped to a pipe. If the dump has self-created its own hole by the building, because it's just dumping, basically it was straight down before. They just put it out with a two-foot extension on it, which leaves it right in the same spot because of the crest of the, um, alley. My suggestion would be is to flip the thing and get it into the storm sewer in the back and look at something in, with those curbs so that we can actually get that thing sloped, whether it needs to be grounded, it needs to be some concrete raised or new concrete in there or whatever.
Travis, can you and Dave look at it and give us a recommendation?
Well, if you, if, if we flipped the curb, you wouldn't have any water coming out the front. Or not the curb, the gutter.
The gutter.
Gutter, yeah.
Just from the alley, there wouldn't be any from the gutter.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that's the most easiest way to do it, is drain it behind the butt.
But he's saying there could still potentially be a problem just from the water coming in from the alley, not from the gutters.
No, I mean, yes it will.
And I'm not criticizing, but if we have the same winter next year, we're still gonna have fourteen or fifteen inches of ice in those areas that are, that are causing ice dams.
I mean...
Come to our building.
If you're gonna flip the gutter, you may as well just look at it and see if there's anything else that needs to be done to just make sure it's solved.
Yeah, look at it.
And I, I know like when the, when it comes down the alley from like Jamison's this way, it's, it goes right to the, that storm sewer right behind there. I mean, it don't keep going down the alley, it goes into that storm sewer.
Maybe we oughta help everything we can there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He might get some from that house up there too, because they have a hot, they're up higher, so it might run off a little bit.
I think, um, I think that'd be the smartest thing to do is put a drain on the gutter down at the far end and then slope it down that way and put it in that storm sewer. I mean, I think that's gonna be the easiest, because I mean, without, if you wanted to dump it out front, you're talking probably removing some sidewalk, getting it so it will go down to that out, I mean, go down to Washington Street. I think the cheapest way is probably put a drain on the other end and slope it that way.
The main problem is ice and snow buildup, preventing the water to go the direction we want it to. And it came down that downspout, couldn't get away, and so it found its path of least resistance, which was in that door at the corner of the building, and that's where the tiles got lifted. That's what it looked like to me.
All right, well, can you guys look at it and come back to us at the next meeting maybe?
Yep.
Okay. Discussion on request to school to remove two trees at City Park.
Just in time.
Sorry, between games at the park.
Go ahead.
Um, so, uh, I think Connie shared pictures of the banner.
Sure, yeah, she did.
Is, what I'd like to be able to do is take those first two trees out along the fence between the park and 4L. To kinda clear the opening to that, uh, that part, the entrance to the stadium there. They wanna put that banner on to kinda dress that up a little bit and make it look a little nicer. But still have a barrier to be clean on that fence, so that the industrial area behind isn't exposed as much. They don't have the funding for the banner yet, but they said today that if it was approved, we would definitely make sure we had the funding for the banner secured before we did cut the trees down. The first one, the tree's in good shape, the second tree there, uh, it looks like it's split down, down the middle. And they thought they were gonna take the first one and take the second one to put it along. What they wanna be able to do is with that banner, draw attention to where they're trying to get people to funnel into, instead of when they come up, there's, there's the entrance of why the concession stand and just the only, there by the press box. Trying to draw attention to the press box and the, the Allstate letters thrown back there to kinda funnel more of those spectacles in.
Well, over the years, those trees have been real controversial. And, uh, the reason they're there is because of the industrial, industrial stuff like that. And if we remove those, are you gonna be able to see that? Are you gonna, how, you're not gonna come in that way, are ya?
They wanna try to block that with the banners.
But the banners aren't wide enough.
The, the banner's a seven foot tall.
It's gonna be wide enough.
And the banner would be six foot tall, according to that downstairs.
This is just to show you what it would look like, that's not an actual...
Okay.
It's not gonna be an actual banner banner, it's gonna be...
I think the dimension was, was sixty or sixty-five feet long and then six foot high. Would cover from where that last tree that was left there, it'd be two or three trees. They'd go all the way past where the new press box is.
My question is, if you get those trees out of there, are you going to run into just having people park there? Because that's what they do now, up into the trees.
It's possible. I would say probably most likely not on game night, I would say like when we have practices for the youth over there. I think you may have more people parked over there, but well, um, the hope is that it becomes more of an official entrance to what that stadium, as I call it, is.
That's been a problem in the past, of people coming on private property to get into that area. There's a liability on the property owner that he's expressed an interest in past years. And he doesn't want anything to do with that liability, people coming into his property.
I think just based on this summer being over there, the replacement poles that we put in around the parking lot have been really, really effective. And I appreciate you guys doing that, because it's, it's definitely cleaned that up tremendously. And it definitely has helped parking and people parking where they're supposed to and not where they're not supposed to.
You know, from the tree board's perspective, I don't think it's gone before them. But they're usually against cutting down trees that are healthy.
One of them's gonna be gone here if it's split down the middle anyway, I mean.
Yeah.
And when I, when I first looked at it, I, I read it as you wanted to take all the trees down. I didn't realize it was just those two. I'm with John, I don't necessarily, I know, I mean, it was way before I got on council, but they were, um, those trees were planted because the school bitched about what they had to look at before. You know, and now that we got them growing, now I'm taking them out, I mean, so... I don't know, that'd be a tough quandary here, I don't... Is there, there isn't any other place that you could put that sign? About Bunny Field sign?
If you could put it, I think where you could put it is a more natural place for cars to park. And you cover it up there, that way.
Well, I think one of the things is those trees were designed to do one thing, and that was to block the noise from the highway, also to block the view from the industrial business that's there. You know, this might be a thing that, you know, the school likes to do now, but five, five years down the road, they may change their mind and say, well, we wish we had some trees there and we're right back to where we were. So, I would be hesitant about cutting them down, uh, just to put a sign on the fence.
Uh, I'd, I'd suggest to refer to the tree board, and I haven't looked at the trees. I don't think the tree board's aware of it. And at least allow them to put their input in on those trees, whether that one's split bad enough and needs to be removed.
I mean, I guess, I'm kind with John there, but I would, I'd like to table just go over so I can go over and look at it and see, you know, what it would look like with two, those two trees gone and, you know, a seven-foot fence up there. I mean, with the eight, six-foot banners on it or six-foot signs on it. Because I mean, I, I agree with you Eric, it would look nice having, you know, welcome to Bob Bunny Field there. I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you on that.
I think they, Connie and I went over and looked at it. I think they originally only wanted to take one tree out. But if you take out, the one tree they wanted to take out's...
The healthy one.
So, it was like, why take out one if you can't take out the other? Connie and I went over there and we were going back and forth when they were asking our thoughts on it, and that's when we decided this was obviously a council decision because of the past history and...
Did you think the second tree was unhealthy?
I think the second tree, we've been watching the second tree for a few years now, but it's one of those arbor by the evergreens that, I mean, they can look ugly for a long time and still be green, so... If, if you were to take the one tree and leave that tree, it would, I mean, it could be the next windstorm and...
Yeah.
They could pull it out too, so it's six and one half a dozen the other on, on that one.
So what do you guys want to do, refer to tree board and have it brought back?
Yeah, we need a motion for that.
And I, I mean, I just wanna go over and look at it. I, I'd be perfectly honest, I didn't see it until on tonight's agenda that that was there. So, I mean, that's, like I said...
So why don't we table it and then let the tree board take a look at it?
Right.
And Doug, you can take a look at it and we'll...
When are you guys wanting to have this done? Or you, you don't have a timeframe or what?
Uh, it'd probably take us a week or so to get the banner made. I think our last home game is, um, end of June.
So probably not for this season?
No.
Okay. Refer to the tree board.
Yep, hey, uh, there was another picture in here of the dugouts with a bunch of water in them. What, do you know why that's in there?
Yeah, we've had a real problem with the weather that we've had. The sudden flood adjacent, the drains that are in there, the water has just seeped up. And we had four and a half, about four and a half foot, I think that's probably accurate Travis, in, in the visitors dugout. It just, I don't know, I wasn't there, don't know how they were designed, it's just that aisle goes anywhere. But we had to cancel, move several games because we didn't have dugouts that were available and stuff. It spawned like a wet basement coming up.
So are you requesting that the city do something about this, or are you just put it in here for reference?
I'm not sure why that's in there.
Okay.
I think Connie was assuming you would probably bring it up, so she was putting it out there. We don't have a, a one-hundred percent grasp of what we're gonna do. I know Rod and I talked, you talked to Rod and I, but it'll be something that we have to look at after the season's over. I mean, we don't, we don't wanna start tearing into a dugout mid-season right now, so... And how were they today? I didn't get over there.
We had, we've been there this morning, the water's been helping.
Okay, so, I mean, on, on an average year, we don't normally have this problem. I mean, the whole ground is saturated, so it's something that we'll have to look at.
I feel like I kinda remember this problem a little bit every year since they've been put in.
And, you know, and like Travis and I, and we've talked about it, I mean, what it'll probably end up doing is we'll put a sump pump or a sump pit in it. We'll have to cut the cement, put a pit in it, that way we can put the pump in and it's lower than the actual floor. That way they can, it'll be in there and they'll just keep pumping, because it'd be like having it in your house, I mean.
Problem we ran into there is all the, the trash from the tree that kept plugging up the, in the, the infill line surface that comes into the dug, the dugout, that kept sucking into our sump pumps and...
Grab your pump.
I think a sump pump would work.
Well, did you say you had sump pumps in there and they got burned up?
Yeah.
So that won't work.
It's something we're gonna have to look into, we, it's not gonna be a...
But not gonna be fixed for this year?
We gotta get the decking off the bench so we can actually see what's in there for, for grading. And, you know, August when it's dry, hopefully would be a good time to look at that.
Okay.
Okay, moving on then, you're gonna let the tree board know, right Christina?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, number, CDEFE, E is tabled.
No, F is tabled. Well, E is tabled, F is removed.
E is tabled, okay.
We're on to six.
Both of those are tabled though, because we're not gonna do the sidewalk.
Yeah, we removed it.
That was removed.
Okay, um, second reading on ordinance O32019 Parks and Rec Board. Possible suspension of rules and placing of ordinance on third reading. We have the second reading there. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
We have a motion to, second, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Does anybody wish to do the third and final reading? Okay, public hearing regarding the rezoning of Lot 3, Novak's first addition from C2 to R2.
I'd like to go into public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, anybody that wishes to speak on it, is that the one you wished? Okay, I'll hear.
Okay. Um, I received this letter in the mail because I own 145 Lincoln Drive, which backs up to this area. And I guess the first thing is I'm not clear, maybe some of you can explain to me, is I went in the backyard today and looked. It's a rental property. Um, I saw the stakes for the survey and I see Carquest here in another building, but I'm not clear where it says it wants to be changed to residential. Does anyone have any information about that?
The way I understand it is that lot, like behind Carquest?
Yes, behind Carquest or in front. The survey stakes are in front of Carquest.
I would say it'd be like the lot to the north of Carquest.
To the north of Carquest, okay.
They, they, it's zoned commercial right now.
Correct.
And they can't get anybody to put a commercial there, so they wanted to change it back to residential.
Residential, okay.
Because they can, think they can sell a house there, I don't know if they're not there or too lot there or whatever.
Right. But I guess I'm curious why the survey was in front of Carquest, the poles?
I have no idea.
In the ground. Yeah, I guess, because my other question is, or questions are, uh, because, and we've just all been talking about raining storms, I, you know, in 2014, there was a terrible storm here and I had a lot of damage to my lower level of my house on Lincoln Drive. So, I wanted to be sure that if something residential is being built, and I don't know what your rules are here, uh, ground, uh, green space versus concrete, uh, what kinda drainage they're going to have, lights, noise, that kinda thing of what this house will have. So it's, is it a single-family house then?
I'm pretty su, I, I think it's only one lot, so yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be kinda like what the blue house is next to it. That was, the one farther down was in...
Okay, so I guess it must be farther away from my house, and I think it is, it said three hundred feet, but...
I think they, they have to notify anybody within three hundred feet. So I mean, if you're like three hundred feet from the very corner of their property line.
Okay. Right, but like I said, the survey sticks are in front of Carquest, so I guess that, maybe that's for something else? Is, is that ju, oh, is that the whole lot line for the whole parcel?
Yeah, that's the front lot line.
For the parcel? Okay, so maybe the house is, so the house, as you understand it, is probably, is you're facing Carquest, is it to the right of Carquest?
Yes.
Oh, all right, okay. Oh, all right, that makes more sense.
Yeah, it's a lot directly north to Carquest.
Oh, all right.
It's, it's zoned, right now it's zoned commercial.
Sure.
And they can't get anybody to put any commercial building there, so they want to change it to residential and hopefully sell it so a house can...
Oh, all right, all right, that makes more sense. It just, when I got this notice, it didn't make, yeah, a lot of sense, and my property manager and some from the bank in Mount Vernon were like, huh, what's that? So, yeah, so if it's to the right of Carquest, then it isn't really gonna be that far from my house, but you're right. If the parcel, then obviously the parcel is larger, and that's probably why they did the survey.
Yeah, it's, it's within, anybody within three hundred feet of that.
It's Carquest, okay.
We're right here. So the house would look something like this one, it's right there.
Okay, because then I must be...
This is Lincoln Drive.
Oh, all right, thank you, I'm 145, so...
You were right there.
Okay, so it's gonna be...
It'll be down.
Oh, great, okay.
This to this.
Yeah, and I saw that, that's when they ran up to here.
So you can, so you can build a new house and move to Lisbon.
I'd have to sell a couple other ones for that. Yeah, oh, perfect, that makes great sense, that makes great sense, okay. It just didn't make any sense and I thought, oh, three hundred feet, okay, great, all right. Well, that takes care of my questions and comments, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Need a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Steph?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Okay, um, first reading on ordinance O42018, rezoning Lot 3, Novak's first addition. Possible suspension of rules and placing on third and final reading.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Travis?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug? Anybody wish to have the third and final reading? Okay, public hearing regarding the possible change of ordinance 1650535, fence definition. We need a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 First, okay, any possible, um...
Discussion.
Are you gonna talk on this, Mike? It's, okay. Any questions for anybody or...
What was the quote?
Fence. It's all right, you're not gonna talk, huh?
What item of the agenda?
Sixty.
Sixty.
We're, it's the definition of a fence.
Yes.
No, I have any...
All right, that's fine. Any more questions or anything? Need a motion to go out of ordinance, public hearing? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
First reading of ordinance O52019, changing ordinance 16505, fence definition to pass and possible suspension of rules and placing ordinance on third and final reading.
I would approve the first reading.
Second.
Motion and a second, um, Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Travis? Any suggestions to go out of suspend, or out of the...
To the third?
Rules and stuff?
No.
To go into third reading, okay. Public hearing regarding ordinance 16525 pertaining to accessory buildings to increase the, you know, some maximum height to increase the maximum height of the detached garage from 16 feet to 14, 7 to 18 feet.
Motion to go into public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Questions?
That's one to P&amp;Z, P&amp;Z and they increase it from 16 to 18, right?
Right. Any questions?
Did you get the note that Connie had here? That her says that, you know, she's received negative responses about the height to the building?
She has not?
She has.
We have. Probably about 30 of them, actually. You mean for the particular building that this was put on here for? Or just in general of increasing?
In general. As we said, yeah, nothing really particular towards this one, just in general, people worried about the heights of the buildings. So, and that's all she relayed to us.
The only, the only thing with those buildings are, if they're not as wide as the one that we brought up before, they won't be that high. As long as they have enough area, see, that building could have been bigger, which would have meant that that 412 roof would be higher, you know, for a common roof. I mean, you can let, maybe with a 212, but then you'd have a weight issue. For safety. It's all in common sense.
Any more comments?
I feel this town has a lot of older buildings that are taller than that anyway for accessory buildings now. Their part is like the age and the character of them.
Well, there's, I mean, it's not the first one in this town. I mean, you know, we've got a lot of them, but, you know...
Yours is a little bit of an anomaly.
Big campers are going to be taller. Two feet on a big building is hardly noticeable. And it won't be any taller than a two-story house.
That's true. Okay, any more comments?
Steph was going to say this.
Questions?
I was just going to say that his is a bit of an anomaly because you literally are in the middle of a residential district and you have that much extra room to build a building of that size. So your building is a little...
It's a deep lot.
Yeah.
And I've had, I've had five or six people come up and talk to me about this. And I, I said basically, a lot of our ordinances are written years and years ago and things are getting bigger and bigger and bigger. You can go out west, east of town here and look how many campers are sitting outside because they can't fit in garages.
Right. And in his situation, he's on Main Street, so, I mean, that would be...
And the people understand, I said, you know, it's, things are getting bigger and they need more room. I mean, it's just...
I do know that with my surrounding neighbors, none of them, I don't think Steve has any problem with it. I haven't talked to him, but the other neighbors I have talked about, talked to, and none of them have any problem. And they're all wondering why that project isn't moving forward.
What color are you going to side it?
It's going to be the same color as my house.
Okay.
The soft, it's going to be white like my house, it's going to be matching my home.
Okay.
I went with extra, extra softs and the extra things to make it look nice.
Any more questions?
I was at the P&amp;Z meeting and the discussion was that, you know, people's toys are getting bigger and bigger. And it was my understanding, somebody says that 11 and a half foot camper is the maximum you can have. Is that true?
That I go, no, but I know mine's 11 and a half.
But they were thinking, move it up to 18, that would accommodate the largest size camper and we shouldn't have to make it taller. Personally, I'd like to see people's toys inside rather than sitting alongside their house. We could pass this for the first reading and then ask Connie about these objections and consider them.
Well, they must be too concerned about it because they didn't show up for the public hearing. So I'm not really, I don't know what to tell them. I mean, it was on the agenda, you had every opportunity to come here and speak their piece.
And they'd have an opportunity, unless we go to the final third reading, they'd have a second chance to come and voice their opinion if they wanted to.
I do know, I apologize to interject, but I do know that there has been a nuisance issue to that particular house. And so if they want to build that big, extra garage, as long as that little items that we've identified are moved into that, that would be great.
I'm sorry, there's, has any nuisance to that house?
The truck, Lisbon Park, that Connie talked to a lot?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. So if that would be an issue brought up, then that we have this extra space and we can put items away into it.
I don't, I mean, Connie has never said nothing to me about it, I mean, other than I had a truck that had a little tire on it and pumped that out. There was no...
Okay, what, anything else?
It's, you know, 16, I mean, it's just like if the school would build, new bus park, they're going to want that extra, that extra height.
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
First reading of ordinance, first reading of ordinance 062019, changing ordinance 16525, accessory building height. Possible suspension of rule, placing on third and final reading.
I will make a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Doug?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Anybody want to suspend the rules and place it on third and final reading?
I am not normally in favor of this, however, he has been waiting a while to get his project finished and we have put it on hold to set it to the proper places. We did give everybody a chance to come to the public hearing. They didn't show up, so I will make a motion to suspend the rules.
We talked about that a month and a half.
Yeah, I will make a motion to suspend the rules and move it on to the third.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Doug?
Hi.
John?
Nay.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Travis?
Nay.
God for lack of...
Yep.
Okay. Public hearing for fiscal year 19 budget amendment.
You still got to go through another.
Maybe two.
First one, yes, that's true.
I have one question about the accessory building. Can you define that, like how, what size of building can I have? How that rule works on that?
Can we define it?
Yeah, like...
Can we get a copy of the ordinance?
It's defined as, I think, 30% of the lot that it's being built in. And with his particular situation, his property line goes over the...
Yeah, let's not think, can you get him a copy of the ordinance so they know exactly what it is?
I'm looking at it right now.
Okay.
What I mean, it's, she can give you a sheet of paper that says exactly what, how big you can build it, where you can build it, when, how big you can build it and everything. Because I mean, it's like maximum size is...
Less percentage of the yard.
Less than 30% of the rear yard. I mean, sheds, other accessories, less than 30. But it tells you, you know, the side yard setbacks, it tells everything. She can give you a copy of that ordinance.
Side yard, rear yard, yard, that's...
But don't start building yet because it hasn't passed.
I'm moving all the way 100% the way. Well, I can have what I want. The issue, the issue is, the wider you go with the building, the taller your roof has to be.
I get that, I want a 12-foot side wall so I can hoist it.
And even with the, even with the 30% of land, that building that I'm putting up could have been bigger. If I had enough land, it could have been bigger. But I didn't want it to be that big.
Okay, let's move on.
Just, I don't know, she wants to do it tonight, but we can get you a copy of the ordinance and everything.
Because at 18 foot, there's a formula, the average of the sidewall.
It'll show you how to figure out the formula and everything.
You want to have that figured out.
Okay, public hearing for fiscal year budget amendment. Motion to go into public hearing?
Motion.
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Public hearing is open for a budget amendment. Closing.
Need a motion to go out of public hearing?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Approval of resolution 262019, fiscal year 19 budget amendment.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Travis?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Doug? Okay. Resolution 282019, approval of high entitlement Scott as summer employee.
Motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Doug?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Travis? New business, increased truck and weight size?
Did you guys read what she had written in there? So basically, she didn't want to send that letter off without your guys' consent. If you guys had any other changes to what she wrote on the letter, gladly she'll make the changes and then get it sent off. Basically, it's just saying that the city's not in, they do not want the longer trucks, the heavier trucks running up and down the streets, so...
Okay, I think that's what we said last time too, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you guys are okay with the letter, she'll send it off when she gets back.
That's fine.
I'm good with it.
Okay. City engineer report? Okay, public works director report?
We're working on parks. Right now, we're spending a lot of time in Stoop Park. The water has, has been detrimental to that park. It's been tough to mow. Everybody's sump pumps that are running in there, that water seems to be holding, or that area seems to be holding a lot of water. We just laid a bunch of new mulch today. We're hoping to finish getting everything ready there tomorrow. We have taken down some ash trees that with the last storm have become dangerous. So there was a couple residents that didn't get notified before. I did make it a point to stop and talk to them when I didn't see them and explain to them what, what was going on. But other than that, we're going to continue working on parks and hopefully the sidewalk between the baseball field, bleachers and concession stands.
Are you going to mulch the city park tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. Because there's a lot of people over there and, you know, they're supposed to be...
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Police chief, report.
You should have it. I believe you proceeded fast enough. Yes, I did.
Any questions for Amy?
No.
Fire chief, report.
He's not here.
Fire chief, okay. City administrator, Christina, you get to do that.
I do. So she wrote me, also is working on the brick repair at the library. We did have a bill from him tonight in our things because he has repaired some so far that were discussed. He's also going to get us a bid for more, so he's going to come back and look. Book walked is up, please do not vandalize. Thank you for those yards that the signs are in. A thank you to Crow Farms for doing the planters and hanging baskets, they're beautiful. This coming weekend is the citywide garage sales, so that means our bulk item day is June 22nd. It'll be from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. The electronics will be here in the city hall parking lot. Myself and my children will be out here as the volunteers. And then I'll also have city hall open for anybody that wants to do the drug drop off that day. And then the other location as usual is down at the city shop, which will be manned by Public Works.
What were the hours?
7:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Okay.
Is there a limit on electronics?
No, I think it's just businesses that are limited by stuff, so residents know. It's just the one truckload that we ask for. If they want to come and buy a extra truckload ticket, they just have to come here to city hall prior to the event.
Businesses or residents as well?
Businesses are limited to two appliances or electronics, so, that day. A letter was sent to Darren Myers giving him seven days to repair the street. His deadline was May 1st, 2019.
Is that the guy who cut out the retaining wall?
Yes. And nuisance letters were sent reminding residents to clean their yards and to use bulk item day for that purpose as well.
What was that letter saying?
The letter for Darren. Says that the deadline was May 1st.
So she's just sent the letter?
Yeah, so she just...
Like last week?
Yeah.
Was it certified?
I would assume she did, so. And I did hear from her today, so she has made a tireless. That's it.
Okay.
You don't know it, but what do we do if you don't do it? Do we just go and do it?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and get it, take care of...
And then we'll bill him?
Yes.
Did you take the bricks out?
Yes.
You know the city paid for all those.
Yes.
Okay. Mayor's report? I don't have anything. Council report, Doug will start with you.
I don't have any. Only thing I see in our packet that they are talking about our solar is last month, with us using solar, we saved 17 trees.